I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor Hasler?
Here.
Alderwoman Clegg-Horn.
Hope we see her.
She's muted. Let's try this. She doesn't...
I'm here.
There we go. Alderwoman Johnson?
Here.
Alderman Donovan? Alderman Jokers? Alderman Einman?
Here.
Alderman Rainey?
Here.
Alderman Prince?
Here.
Alderwoman Arberster?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. For approval of the agenda.
For approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Takes us down to our seat administrator slash tourism director's report.
Detailed report.
Thanks. You know, oh, no. So you've got your, I've got an updated sheet at your seats for the city administrator report. Tourism group will be meeting next Thursday to meet with a candidate. It'll be, had to postpone the meeting because the candidate was out of town. So we'll be meeting next Thursday, maybe have a recommendation from Tourism Tax and Tourism Advisory. Cochran was out surveying on North Fourth Street, working on plans for that street and stormwater improvement project. It's gonna be a little bit, should see some results on that in January, some plans, at least we can look at preliminarily, and then probably discuss with the neighbors a little bit, trying to see how things work out with the street and the stormwater. I have not received an update on the stormwater engineering part with the areas that we've got them looking at. Again, they promised at least a draft before the end of the month. So if I get something, we may be sending it out in email so you can take a look at it. So any questions about anything else on the report? All right, moving on.
Yes, moving on, our staff reports, tourism.
So we have a few events still going on. Alley Alley May continues, that's for another weekend at French Colonial America, for another couple of weekends. La Guina Lee is New Year's Eve, and I know I didn't say that right. We have a watch party at MCA. I can say it in my head, but I can't say it out loud, but that's one of the activities coming up. King's Ball has been planned in February. That'll be at the DFW Hall. Tickets are available now. We did get confirmation that the gravel classic, the St. Genevieve gravel classic will be April 15th. There may be a move on that, there's some talk that it might be moved to like that Sunday. It would be check-in on Saturday, and then they would have the Taste of St. Genevieve that night, because the hospital is gonna be involved again this year with the road race. So that'll, that'll be, then it'll be good for the road race, but it may be a little bit of change there, but it'll still be that weekend. And vendors can contact me if they're interested in participating, or I'll get them in touch with TrailNet, because they're gonna be the ones organizing it again this year. We boosted our Facebook post for the Holiday Christmas Festival. I hope that it helped, I mean, our numbers were up from people engaged, getting engaged with it. So our website visits were about the same, we have the schedules up there, but we also have schedules up on Facebook, and I think that helped people to find out what was going on that day and not have to go to the Welcome Center, not have to go someplace to try to find what the schedule was, but the activity is on Saturday and Sunday. Website committee will get together next month, everybody's kinda busy right now. I'm gonna be posting on Facebook occasionally over the next few weeks, kinda highlighting the different shops and businesses in the historic district, just kinda highlighting some streets. Nothing real extensive, just a few pictures, a little bit of words, but just trying to, you know, kinda emphasize with our online advertising, kinda just help boost that and put those in, you know, kind of concert together where we have talked about coming and shopping. We're doing that with our radio ads, doing that with our online ads. Let's also look at, you know, putting a little something on our Facebook page. And Google advertising numbers in October showed 305 impressions with 33 clicking to get to the website. Three of those were showing intent to visit. For November, the numbers are 1,130 impressions with 104 clicks, seven of those showing intent to visit. So in the last 30 days, our click-through rate was about 10 percent, which I'm told by those that know things, that that's good. So you want 10 percent or better. So I'm gonna say that's good. From year to year, our business profile views are up 42.4 percent, and the search results have gone up. So I'm gonna say that's because of our advertising. What we've been able to put out on billboards, radio, online, all of it is contributing to getting more people directed to the website, which is what we are shooting for. Any questions?
Cool. All right. Very good. Thank you, Pappy. Chief Crump?
You guys should have a copy of my report, some of the highlights. We are still down a couple officers. We hired a part-time officer today, Steve Poole, used to work with us, 20 years law enforcement, and he's had six years here. He's agreed to come back, at least through the winter months, on weekends, to help us get through some weekends. So it's more of a short-term, part-time, but it'll help us out to get through the winter months. Do have a couple applications for full-time that we're going through now. Hopefully that'll lead to something. Met with the sales rep for the Flock license plate reader cameras, so we're moving forward with those. Hopefully by January, we'll have a couple locations and an actual quote to bring to the board for approval to move forward. Still working on the Lexi-Pole policy manual, that's pretty much an everyday event, they say for about the next eight months. So we're moving forward with that. And then the last option is the K-9 program, but that's on the work session to discuss afterwards, so we'll wait until then for that.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Chief Starter?
Good evening, everyone, you should have my report too. I'll first admit up to a typo. The first one is the October, should've been November there. We did 16 calls in October, or in November, brings us 213 for the year. In December of last year, we ran 219, or we ran 19, so it brought us up. We will be at around 230 calls if we do what we've been averaging, which averages out to about four or five calls a week we run with the fire department. Last month's training meeting, we did turnout gear inspection, that's our annual thing where we inspect the gear, make sure everything's up to snuff, up to speed, we'll see what we need to order when we come back for our annual capital improvements and hopefully the ARPA money, and buy some gear. All the first round of the radios that I got on grants have been installed and are operational. I spent some time out there with them getting that taken care of, and I completed the ARPA grant, got it in before the deadline, which just recently extended a couple of extra days, so I could've had a couple extra days, but we got it in. We did a PR with the Sunrise Enrichment Center, the challenge folks that came down, they had a ball. They're really looking forward to the next trip, they said. We also assisted PD with the Veterans Parade, and just the other day, we assisted with the Christmas Walk Parade too. Other than that, a lot of what I've been doing is a lot administrative stuff, lining up and helping get the radios installed, closing out that grant, or working on closing it out, worked with several people on some Knox boxes, I got some more Knox boxes that are getting ready to get installed, got recently ordered, been setting up some training with some outside vendors. We do have a class coming in on electric vehicles, fires and things in January, and we've got another guy, some working on with the county for propane fires. Got a lot of that stuff going on, so been busy on administrative end, luckily not as busy on the fire end. One thing I would like the board to consider down the road too is, I know there's been some discussion about having somebody at the firehouse part-time, and I know it's an ongoing discussion. Like to relate today, something that happened, I was out there like I am so many days, a long day, most of the day. Got a phone call a while ago, and the lady says, hey, I'm worried about my smoke, my carbon monoxide detector going off. My mom lives in a house by herself. I think there's an expectation out there in the public right now, that there be somebody at a firehouse to take phone calls like that. I take on average four or five calls a week, that kinda stuff. Tonight, I was able to drop what I was doing, get in the car, and drive down there and check it for them, and give them peace of mind and make sure it was safe for them, so I think that's something we ought to be thinking about down the road too, that people have an expectancy now of being able to call the firehouse and say, hey, I need some help. She didn't wanna call 911 because she didn't want a big rug and roll, but as long as there's somebody there to answer the call, something to consider for down the road, having somebody out there. So I just appreciate some thinking about that. Open for any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Right on. David?
Good evening, everyone. You've got my report there. Finally, our Historic Preservation Grant, we applied for about a year and a half ago. The federal funding came down, so happy, and I got the agreement signed this week, so we'll be moving forward. We'll get a request or proposal out early next year, and hopefully that event will happen either early summer or early fall, so that'll be good. Every year, we have to submit a certified local government annual report, which is basically the Historic Preservation Report, in order to keep our status as a certified local government. That was submitted November 29th. I have a copy if you wanna see it, but basically, it's just a synopsis of all the things that we do, and who's on our commission, and what their qualifications are. So that was submitted. You've got the numbers for the Building Department and Code Enforcement there. I think I've got a decent amount of ideas now for working tiny homes into zoning, so I don't know if we wanna, you know, put that in a work session or a committee coming up soon, but maybe in January, we've got a couple other zoning items coming up that I'll go over here in a minute, might throw all that together. Under the comprehensive plan update, I spoke with Drew Christian at the RPC, I guess Monday. Does plan to have the survey out beginning of January. That is now five months behind, but they have hired a dedicated person for these plans now, and he hopes to have us get caught up a couple months here over the next couple stages. So the next, once that survey gets out, it'll probably be open for a couple weeks, and then they'll gather the results, bring that to staff, and then back to the steering committee, which Alderman Rainey and Alderwoman Johnson are on, and go forward from there to see where we can go into the vision development portion of that plan. Planning and zoning wise, do have a couple of items, either for a tentative work session or committee, and those are the items I talked about that could go in conjunction with tiny homes, and that's the recreational marijuana zoning, and then home-based businesses. Legislature passed a statute last year that made home-based businesses not something that's subject to special use. So there's a little difference in definition there, but we had a meeting today, and I think we've got a good plan in place, and we'll get that to you here in January or February. That's really all I have unless you guys have questions.
Thank you, David. Steve?
Evening, everyone. Water side of things, we had just a couple small leaks, some major pit leaks that we had to deal with. One was actually Mike's driveway. We got that concrete repaired, and numerous other locations in town where concrete repairs were needed. All the plow trucks are ready to go, spreaders are operational. Salt pile was topped off this week, we're at full capacity, and all the equipment is working. For now, we'll wait for that. UV system at the wastewater treatment plant was shut down for the recreational season. That only runs from April 1st to October 31st, so that's shut down. Any needed repairs and parts will be ordered during the recreational off-season, and then we will complete the repairs and it'll be ready to go at the beginning of next April. So the Robinwood lift station, all the repairs are complete with that. We are no longer hauling the fluid that was in that tank. That panel is installed and it's running beautifully, no issues since then, so. Tree trimming, numerous locations in the downtown area, down by the Purgala, Welcome Center, light pole maintenance. And then we moved right into, after Thanksgiving, we moved right into Christmas stickers, so. I did get an update on the back truck. We are looking at about eight months before we see it, so. Any questions?
Under the parts, it says paint inventory was completed to prepare for next season. What, this year?
That's gonna be speed bumps and soccer fields. Also included in that would be interiors and bathrooms. All right. Thank you.
Any committee reports?
The press board won't be meeting for December.
Very good. Any public comments? Now's the time for public comments.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Please come forward.
Good evening, committee members, I'm here to speak, it was brought to my attention that there was some...
Your name?
Sorry. My name is Philip Quan, I am a member of Ward Four, and I'm here to discuss the, something that was brought to my attention, that there was a possibility that the city is considering the cutting funding for the school resource officer. Is that correct?
The vehicle.
Just...
Not the officer, the vehicle.
Just the vehicle?
Yeah, we're talking just about the vehicle.
Okay, perfect, then I have no comment at all. Thank you.
Any other public comments? If there's no other public comments, we'll move on to the, we've got the information for the consent agenda to look over.
Of the amended minutes, right. We're gonna approve the amended minutes. Okay. Just wanna make sure, I didn't know if somebody had to actually say.
Is that where I'm at, your seats?
Okay. Thank you.
So we have a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Pardon me? Oh, I forgot. All right. It takes us down to old business. We're reading again Resolution 202304, Resolution by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with the St. Genevieve R2 School District for the donation of a 2018 Ford Explorer to be used by the school resource officer, and declaring the vehicle surplus. May I approve? Mayor, I'll admit...
It's already been approved.
It's already been approved. This is... You go ahead.
I'm not really sure what you're...
Yeah, it's...
It's like you've already approved this, and it's my understanding the agreement was signed.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay.
So I just assumed it was a general discussion of the topic, because it's already been approved and the agreement's signed, so.
Mayor, I would like to speak on this and make a motion to rescind. First of all, we don't know what our position is with the K-9, which the chief had just talked about. You know, this is not an attack against Officer Clark at all. She does a tremendous job, she's very much an asset. The letters that we've gotten in support of her, I totally agree with. I don't have a problem at all with the position or anything else. My problem is, you know, we are a city with a budget of roughly $4 million, they're an entity with a budget of $24, $25 million. We aren't in a position right now to be donating anything, because like we discussed at the last meeting, we have improvements to the 911 system that we don't have any money for. We don't have any money to replace the dog, and the chief had made a comment that he believes he can get donations to help fund the dog. I've had people come into work and said, if we can afford to give a $12,000 vehicle away, they're not gonna donate for the dog, because we're not acting fiscally responsible. We're just not in a position right now until we determine what's going on with the dog. You know, yes, Officer Clark provides a tremendous asset to the city and saves a lot of officers' time of going up there and working for calls that they would normally get called up there for that she handles. I totally get it. However, and let's flip the scorecard on that, our K-9 officer spends a lot of time in the schools, helping her assist her position, so her position's not in jeopardy at all. It's our donation of a vehicle. However, if we don't have funding for our dog, our K-9 program is in jeopardy. We don't have the ability to just give our stuff away and then go out and ask for donations. You know, let's put this on hold and revisit it once we find out what we're doing with the dog, if it's gonna be covered under insurance. You know, the dog is just as much an asset to the school as the car is. And to put one over the other, we agreed to, the Herald was wrong in their article that this was an ongoing thing and that we were continuously donating vehicles. We donated one to get that program up and running, and I want that clear, that we haven't continuously donated vehicles, we donated one. And that was purely to get the program up and running. If we can get the dog situation taken care of, and let's say it is covered by insurance, then great. I don't see a problem moving forward with possibly doing that, but we have too many things right now that that, or $12,000 that we could get for that car, could fix some issues that we have that we keep telling people we don't have the money for. As long as I've sat on this board the last 12, 13 years, whatever it's been, barricades have been up on a sidewalk on Jefferson Street, because it's not safe to walk on.
That's being corrected, though.
Okay, 12 years?
Well, I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying. We have, $12,000 will go a long way for a sidewalk, or for this or that. We are not in a position, when we keep telling people that we don't have the money to fix something, but yet we have money to donate, or we have a way to donate our assets, we need to get some things straightened out first. It is a worthwhile program, but so is our K-9 program. You know, are they willing to help us with that if we help them with the resource officer?
We're gonna be talking about that tonight.
I mean, so I would like to rescind this for a later date to take up for discussion, maybe at a work session or whatever else. At this particular time, I don't think it's fiscally responsible for us to be giving away an asset when we have so many things on our plate that we cannot afford. And we have a program that is in jeopardy for $14,000 roughly, versus an asset that we're donating that we could get probably $12,000 into today's market, maybe even more, which will go a long way to funding that K-9. You know, and we're gonna go out and ask for donations? It just seems backwards.
I didn't hear on that, I never heard that. I don't know, maybe I was not listening when, or the chief said that, I don't know if he said that too, but you know, we crossed this road when the last K-9 we had had an injury, and we made a way, and we got the dog we have now, we, I understand what you're saying, but for me, I'll tell you right now, this, to be on the, to be on an agenda item, it was on the consent agenda, the last meeting we had, it was pulled off of there so we could discuss it. We had a healthy discussion about the K-9, about, you know, the needs that we had that were coming, the 911, but we decided, the board decided to pass this resolution to donate the car, and now we're gonna come back and say, well, we didn't think hard long enough?
That program's not in jeopardy, our K-9 program is.
It could be, it could be, Joe. I understand that, it could be, but we talked about this, and it'll get resolved, and we're gonna talk about tonight whether we're gonna have a program anymore with that. I don't know, but I'm totally against it, and it's your responsibility, it was up to me, it would never have been brought back to this, to this board, because it was already passed, and we had to move on. That's for me, for the record, and I don't have, so I have a motion. Anybody else wanna comment? Before, I have one motion to rescind this. Any more comments? So I have a second to rescind this, to rescind this. I hear no seconds, so the issue carries, we're gonna keep it, we're not gonna deal with our program, so stay as it is. Okay. Thank you very much. Takes us to new business, approval of the bid from Bob Otto Striping Services to re-stripe Progress Parkway in an amount of $11,400. And then, any comments on that, or any questions on that? It's much...
That was the only bid?
That was the only bid. We've been looking for a year and a half to find somebody to go ahead.
It needs it. If you're not used to driving it, you don't know what...
And I looked at it too.
What's the online, you're supposed to say between?
And that's a lot, so they're gonna stripe the middle and then both the sides too? Both sides and the arrows at the corner. Okay. We need approval to... Do I have approval for that?
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Second issue is approval of a company for salary study for the City of St. Genevieve? So the first time we went out, we got no responses, the second time we went out, we got two, two qualified companies. So I've had a chance to talk to both of them, they're both, you know, know what they're doing, what they've, you know, have done these studies. Austin Peters is currently working with Crystal City on a study. CBIS has worked with Perryville and Cape Girardeau on a study. Both organizations, and Austin Peters had also worked with Great Camp and Festus, and he had, you know, glowing reviews for them. So I mean, we've got two good companies that we can choose from. So I'm making a recommendation of CBIS, because CBIS had done Perryville recently, so they've been in the neighborhood. I also thought their plan was a little more detailed as to what they're expecting and what we would get from their product. You're gonna get a little more though from Austin Peters, because they're going to do a check for FLSA, making sure that we follow exempt, non-exempt, as opposed to CBIS wants to charge more for that, for that process. So it just depends on, you know, what you're looking at, if it's bottom line, or if it's a comprehensive look at what we have available, or that they've already been able to, they've already been in the neighborhood and have had a chance to look at what's, what the salaries are in our area. And I sent you, I think I sent you complete packets from both of them, so you had a chance to look at them and try to, try to determine what was, what would work best for St. Genevieve. So I have a motion to approve, or...
To approve CBIS.
Are they just copying and pasting Perryville's for us? Or are they gonna relook into their numbers?
I figured they had to jump on things, because they would've had those numbers. They're still gonna do interviews with staff and find out, you know, about the jobs. We're not gonna redo all the job descriptions, we just went through that a couple years ago. But they're still gonna do all the interviews, but they probably should have already have in stock what they've looked at in outside businesses in the area. But again, Austin Peters, again, would still do a, it's gonna job for the city as well.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have an opinion either way, I was just curious. I mean, if we're just getting a copy and paste report, then we can get past Perryville for theirs, right? Public record. But, so, I'll support whatever the board...
You made a motion.
No, I was just asking for clarification.
Joe, you got a question?
I missed the first part of his speech. Which, which one did you say you had working, that you have worked with before?
I have not worked with either one of them.
Okay, you said somebody did.
So CBIS had worked with Perryville and Cape Girardeau, and then Austin Peters had worked with, are now working with Crystal City, and they've worked with Festus before. And it was after I had left, they'd done a salary survey.
Okay. And the proposal is to go with the one that offers the more comprehensive for the same price, or the one that charges?
At this point, I'm looking at the one that's a little bit pricier, because I like the details that they had in their proposal. I thought it better spelled out what they expected us to provide and what they would be providing us.
I mean, you've gone through this, and you've seen them before, I trust your judgment in which one you feel comfortable with, so.
That's what I think too, yeah, so, I mean, I'm, you know, I, both of them are good. I'm giving a recommendation, but I think either way, we get a, we get a quality survey out of it. Did you already pay one? Yeah, it's our recommendation.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve CBIS.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the last item is broker proposal...
And then the last item is broker proposal discussion.
So our committee met and we had one, one proposal that was submitted for the broker, real estate broker for the property out at Progress Parkway. The committee felt that the proposal wasn't strong enough for, for the residential commercial that we're looking at focusing on for that property. So the idea is that we sit down and talk with the attorney, kind of clarify what, what we can ask for, look at in the way of an agreement when we come to that point, trying to kind of figure things out before we get there. But also that we should probably go back out, open it up again, and this company can also submit another proposal, just focus it more on the, on the specifics that we're looking at, which is more of a, it's going to become a subdivision. We want somebody to develop it. The group that submitted does mostly large plots, they're looking at ranches, farms, hunting ground, that kind of stuff. So they were, they were concerned that they would not be able to provide the services that we, that we would want, based on the proposal. But if they want to submit, show better, better action in previous, if they've had previous sales and, and see where that's progressed with those developments, that might be something that we can, can work with. But we can also open it back up. Anybody that has any recommendations? I sent out four requests, or five, four requests, and got one back, wasn't any of the ones that I had sent out. So if you have anybody that you want us to contact, we can, we can try to stir it up. It worked on the salary survey. By going out again, we stirred up more, more interest. So we can do the same thing with the brokerage firm.
I'll do that.
Agreed.
Yep. So what we're looking at, looking for is like a motion to reject the submitted proposal and go back out for submissions. And we'll, we'll time it after Christmas, give enough time in January to, to put something together.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
I was about to say, I motion for that, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Don't ask me to repeat it.
Any other business? If there's no other business, a call this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sir, I need approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy, it's all you.
Alright, so we didn't get ARPA money for the water lines, the water mains. As I've told many, many groups that I've talked to, we were like 264 out of 300 and some, and even if everybody at the top said, "No, thank you," we were never going to get that money. And it shows you the need in the state. It was over a billion dollars that was requested, and they only had 410 million, 410 million. So what we're doing is, we're looking at the consolidated plan that we already had in place, and utilizing the money that we had already allotted for that, which is $315,000. I can't meet that exact amount. I can get close to that based on the projects that we had listed, so we can include all of those that are on the sheet that I attached, and that would be $388,000, so we'd be getting into the reserves again to fund all that. And these are estimates based on what was in the consolidated plan and adding about 20 to 25 percent. I may be over what it could be, but based on what we had in the last group that we had put out for bid, it was significant, and a significant increase. So we can either go with all of Oakwood or a portion of Oakwood. It just depends on how you want to, how you want to approach it. So again, it's either 281,000 or 388,000 that we would do. Included with that is rosier, so then that goes into the street overlays. I want to try to get those done, so we can at least get that street paved and get it in good shape. But depends on what the board wants to do in the way of, what we could do, what we could do, is we can also set up the bid to be a, an add alternate, and add the second phase of Oakwood, and then if it comes in where we have a budget, if it comes with a budget, then we could just accept it, if you want to do that.
Is there a portion of Oakwood that is worse than the other, or is it all about the same?
It's all four-inch cast iron.
Cast iron, yeah.
We're replacing that with six-inch PVC. So it's all, when it was all installed, all the same. There's nothing bad, it's not like it's breaking, there's a bad spot that we really need to fix.
No settlement issues or anything that are causing, okay.
No.
I think we don't know what prices are going to be like, using it as an add alternate would be a good course of action.
Everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, alright. You okay with that? Yep. Yep. 2023 street overlay projects, that will include rosier. We went through all of these before, just confirming that these are the roads that are okay. We are a little bit over budget at 325,000, as we budgeted, so total, if we include Lynn, is 338,000, almost 339. But that finishes one street that we haven't had a chance to finish yet.
And it's possible we'll come under on the water main if we end up not doing that section of Oakwood.
Yeah, so Oakwood, Oakwood is not a street overlay. So Oakwood is, all of those water lines are off the street.
I'm just looking at the numbers, if we take that up.
You can use the water main for street.
Right, yeah, turn it, my math does not work that way, does it?
We can use it for rosier, because we'll be doing, we'll be doing some of the work in rosier street, but that, it won't be that much.
Rosier from Center Drive, is that where you're talking about?
No, we're talking from Park to Cedar.
Well, I tell you what, that, we're 32 Center Drive and rosier meet at that, right there by CBS, that is horrendous. I mean, that dip there, and it's just.
But that's state.
I know it is, but I'm just getting it out. Did we ever talk to MODOT about that? Because that's got to be.
We talked to them about that.
They did the one at St. Jude.
They did that one at St. Jude, because that was a problem.
What they did, yeah.
I don't know if that has an issue, because you're looking at stormwater and you've got a certain elevation to.
Yeah. So there's a pipe down to the road there.
I think it's a.
I know there's a pipe.
There's a pipe, they've also got the ditch in there, too. Yeah. So at some point, they're going to be paving that, repaving it, so maybe at that point, they could take a look at it. We can talk to them.
I didn't talk to MODOT about it.
Yeah.
So I had some people ask me about that.
That's right.
I know, it's been a hot topic.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Couple months ago or so.
Hey, Happy, can we, can we agree on the definition of an overlay from curb to curb, the entire width of said street, and similar material? So concrete for concrete, asphalt for asphalt. True statement?
We attempt to. There are sections that have been paved in the past that we do not pave. An example of that is Biltmore, where there is a curve that goes up the street to Fourth Street, and the city or somebody had paved way out on that curve, and we did not go out that far.
Okay, sure.
You know, so we take it into account when we look at it, and when we walk those streets, the last time we walked it twice, to determine where we wanted our edges to go. And then we have to, you know, we judge based on what's existing, and then if we feel that it needs to expand to certain areas, we'll do that. But it's a judgment call each time. But yes, generally, it's going to be curb to curb.
Are you, are you aware of anything on the list that would not be, that you know of?
Having not walked them, no.
Okay.
But I think, like with Gag, I think Gag is totally, it's going to have to be a total rebuild. There's a section of that that's, that's, that has been washed away. Jefferson should be curb to curb because you've got sidewalks, that'll be easy.
What's the, where on Jefferson?
From Second to Main.
Okay.
It's our worst section.
Yeah, I just wanted to get an idea of how long of a stretch we're talking.
One block.
Huh? Yeah. I mean, the whole thing needs it, but yeah.
And we felt that that was the worst section, and needed to be done before the others, that we can, we need to save that one, or else it's going to be one of those.
Well, we have to do the sidewalk work, too, and stuff on the upper end of it, right?
Yeah, but that's kind of the two blocks.
Yeah.
But yes, fix that first.
Like, there's other areas that need to be fixed before we go in and pave that part of it, so yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I think it's, it's good to set the expectation now out loud, because we've talked, I hate to even say the word Parkwood in this meeting, but everybody anticipated curb to curb, and so we got like two-thirds of what we thought we could get on Parkwood. It's all serviceable, well, it's mostly serviceable, we thought, all the way to the intersection would happen, but I hate to replicate that. I hate to, to go into this listing of streets and then find out it's not curb to curb, it's not, you know, somehow disparate materials.
So what are we getting for 25 grand on Claymont?
Curb to curb.
Well, thank you.
Curb to curb, but we're not going to do, we're not going to do the cul-de-sac, because cul-de-sac's in good shape. So it's just a section from the, from that cul-de-sac, right, and it's back over to Parkwood.
Not, not that that's, that was not my only concern.
From Parkwood to the cul-de-sac.
Again, I look at what we have to spend, and Parkwood, it would have been, you know, another, another $75,000 to do all that, and you had a good section of street, so why not?
No, totally agree with that, I just think we didn't do a good job setting that expectation in the beginning, prior to the work, and I'm going to take the hit for that. I probably was not vocal enough, and I didn't nail that down.
Well, and maybe we just say right now, if we get into this, and you get, you know, you figure out the prices, and you realize, we don't have the money to quite do that, just maybe letting the board know, like, hey, if 25,000 won't get us what we thought it would, it'll get us this section, do we go more, or do we go somewhere else with it?
Yeah, agree with that statement.
So.
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm good with this list.
Same.
Okay. Alright. So we have the chief here, Officer Cuscinelli, with Mario. As you've heard, we've discussed, we have to retire Mario. He's, he's going to have to start getting lagers. Because of his ability to smell marijuana, and now it's legal, we can't retain him, because you cannot do a false search, and that's what it could be considered. If Mario smells something, it could be drugs that are still regulated in Missouri, but if, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, potentially, it wouldn't be legal. So we have to look at replacing, or not, you know, not doing the animal, the K-9 officer. We'll look into the insurance part of it, I mean, fundraising, we were just talking about that.
I'll touch on a couple of those. First, to clarify on the fundraising, when that was mentioned, we're not looking at local fundraising and taxing our own citizens. What we're looking at is like a national campaign that has been done by some other departments through social media. That's something that would take time, so that would be something more of, it would be sanctioned through the paw stoppers, so the money would be filtered through them and back to the city for the tax donation portion for the donors. And it's something that would be, once we develop this program on the fundraising, and then it would reimburse any expenditures that we have had. So it's nothing that could be raised within the next month, use those funds, and purchase the dog. It would be if we go on with the purchase, we could still do this campaign through social media, people could donate to it, and then that money would be donated to paw stoppers under Nick Cuscinelli's account, and then that money could be back to the city for general revenue, or wherever that money was pulled from. So it's nothing we're going to do locally, or go ask our residents in St. Genevieve to donate and fund the dog. They would have the option to do that, but that's not, that's not who we're targeting. So I just wanted to clarify that.
How much are you, how much are you talking, how, what do you, idea what it's going to cost?
$14,000 to, to replace him, and that's with the training.
Okay.
With that said, we have also, we have looked at the budget, because I understand, you know, where we want to be with reserves, and I understand, with our budget, we had put in $15,000 for some safety equipment, which was armor, rifle plates, and some ballistic helmets. There's also some grants for those items through the, possibly through the insurance company, that has already been working on, plus the block grant also covers those items. So what I have proposed to Happy is that we take that $15,000 and replace Mario, and continue with our K-9 program, and not have to pull out additional money from the general revenue, and then we will look at grants to fund that project. We had talked about ways that we could work around, hopefully, the new amendment, and we've been doing that, but I will tell you, over 50% of the time, we have not been able to utilize the dog because, because of certain reasons. But, and then it's just going to get worse from here. So really, I mean, he's just not getting utilized right now. He's just.
Have we checked into insurance as far as filing a claim?
I have not, but I have checked with local departments, and they have all been denied that. So I mean, I'm sure, we can make that phone call, but I, from what I've been told, it's not going to happen through the insurance company, because they still deem that he does have a purpose, is what I have been told through other agencies that research that.
Oh, chief, kind of adjacent to that point, I'm, I'm getting a couple of questions now and again about, well, why, why is, why is the dog not going to be able to serve its purpose? You kind of alluded to other departments thinking that that might have, is there a resource that we can point people to, to say, this does a better job of articulating that than?
Why he won't work is because he, the dog will alert to marijuana, along with other controlled substances. We don't know what controlled substance he's alerting to, he's just alerting to a controlled substance. So if he were to alert on a vehicle, he's alerting to a controlled substance. If that, what he's trained to is actually marijuana, that's not illegal. So for us to enter that vehicle on that alert, and it just be marijuana in the vehicle, we have violated their rights, because that is not a controlled substance.
I think that's the exact explanation that we needed to get out there.
Yes.
Yes.
If that answers the questions I was getting.
By way to effect, you just.
In effect today.
Today, December 8.
$14,000 was the cheapest bid for the dog. We have talked to the company, I think they have anticipated this going large scale, so like right now, if, if we would make the decision, and we would decide to go up in January and start the process, they will have between 30 and 40 dogs that are trained and ready. We go up, we run through the dogs, we search until we find what we think is a good connection, we do the deposit, we come back home, and then Officer Cuscinelli would have a scheduled date to go back up for the training. Since he's an experienced handler, he don't have to do the four weeks, it's looking at a one to two week acclimation training, and all of that is included in that $14,000, though.
Is this the place in Michigan that we used?
No, the place in Michigan that we used before had a falling out with Napwata, who certified the dog, and he is no longer a Napwata instructor, or whatever it is, so the dog wouldn't be certified through him. So this is Shadow Creek out of Pennsylvania, where the sheriff's department here locally buys their payments. And I have three bids on those, and theirs was the cheapest at 14, and then up to 19,000, I think the last one was 21 something. Like I said, we can buy it with the money that we were going to use for the other items, so we're not going back to general revenue or asking for a budget amendment, and then we'll look at a grant for those items.
With being two officers short, is our payroll coming in under as far as, or is the overtime?
No such a bonus, I'm not aware of. We're way under.
Well, I mean, overtime eating that up, you know, the savings that we've had?
Not right now, and I believe, I mean, we're not, we're not eating up in overtime now, and plus there was some additional for the part-time salary, so either way, we're going to be under on salary line item overall. I mean, historically, overall, we're anywhere from, I think the closest I remember coming in budget was 20,000, but typically, we're up 70, 80,000 under budget overall. So even if we would fund both projects, in the end, I don't anticipate being a problem. But if for some reason we wouldn't get the grant for those items, I would rather wait until towards the end of budget year and see where we're going to end overall line item, and then reapproach the board and look for the funding for the additional rifle plates and ballistic helmets, if we have the funding and the grants left there. But I, I mean, I think the K-9 program, right now, takes priorities over those.
I take it we need a K-9 program?
We do, it is, I mean, it's definitely beneficial to us, it's to the citizens, officer protection, the school district's been utilizing him, a lot of, a lot more at the school with just public relations, and just letting the kids see that we're not the bad guys, usually are.
Right, right.
And, and so far, it's working out great.
Yeah, my grandson said, "I got the pet tomorrow."
I said, "We have, we have failed in the past of just educating what the dog does." You know, hopefully, we're changing that, and we're starting to put some numbers to it, so you guys see that he is out there working every day, and he is being utilized.
That's no brainer, we move forward, what you stated, I think we go for it.
I just, I just want to thank you for that extra information, and I appreciate that you looked at your existing budget and found a way to make that work without coming and asking for more, and I hope that we can still fund everything else.
I think it'll work out, yeah, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
Where does, where does Officer Mario retire to?
That's the other thing we'll have to discuss, the city will have to make the decision, because he is the city's dog. Under the current situation, the handler is not prepared or in a position to have two The company, the kennel that we're looking at getting the dog, has said that there's departments out there that can still utilize that type of dog, because of, maybe it's a correctional facility, it might be a school facility, so any controlled substance is illegal. So they would help us placement of the dog to another department. If that doesn't work, and we would find a private citizen, I mean, we have that option, but it's going to have to be somebody that knows how to handle that type of dog.
Does he take a command, meaning, if he, if he strolls by legal marijuana use now, will he not alert unless he's instructed to alert?
No, he will alert, and you can, yeah, he'll alert, if he, if he's near, he's going to alert to it, because that's what he's trained to do.
Okay.
Even without the command of work.
The only time that he will not alert on drugs is if we're in a building search capacity, like we're looking for a burglar or something like that, that's the only time he's not going to alert, because he knows he's on a specific, that specific mission, and that's not, we're not dealing with the drugs, but just walking down the road, he's, he's going to alert to.
So from today going forward, you could make a lot of new friends that way, if you're walking your dogs.
Yeah, you're going to start sitting every couple steps.
Depending on how popular this measure is.
So that, but you'll have some options for Mario at some point?
Yes, we're going to look at all the options, and we'll present them to the city. I mean, I'm sure there's some kind of paperwork that goes involved, involved with that to release any liability from the city.
Well, you're probably surpassing him like a car.
Yeah, I do know that there is, if we get in a situation where we can't find a home, there is a local deputy that was a K-9 handler in St. Francis County, who is familiar with police dogs, and has offered to take him as his own personal dog, as a last resort if we can't find another department. So there is an option out there, but rather, you can go to the department.
I thought you said a long thing.
I didn't bring it up.
This is a Dutch shepherd, and we're hoping to stay in the shepherd family, but.
Right.
And did you say that, did they give you a timeline, the folks in Pennsylvania, for the, having a new dog trained, like how long would it be before we?
If the dogs are trained, they will be trained, when we go up in January, they'll already be trained and ready.
January, okay.
Yeah, so then we could go up, pick the dog, come home, and there would be a set date, I would assume probably within just a few weeks, or maybe February, and he would go up, and that would be a one to two week class, and it's more of just an acclimation class between him and the dog, and then he would come back home from there.
And you have no concerns about coverage during those one to two weeks?
No, I think we'll be able to make it with.
With your part time? Okay.
And then, like I said, we're in the process with two applicants, so hopefully, that will.
Are these applicants ready to go?
One of them is, one of them has six or seven years of law enforcement, a short time here, and he moved on, and that was prior to Prop P, and now he's ready to go back, so. And one would be a pretty quick one, and the other one's right out of the academy.
Right.
How long typically are these dogs able to serve?
It kind of depends on each individual dog, but normally, age 10, nine or 10 years old, you're looking at retirement.
And what age are the dogs usually when they, like when we acquire?
Somewhere around 15 months of age.
How old is Mario?
Mario is six.
Really? You don't know him like that?
Yeah. That's right.
Any other questions?
So we just need to bring that back to the board with the quotes, and then.
There you go. You good?
Appreciate your work.
Thank you very much.
Wow, thank you, guys.
Appreciate you tomorrow.
Yeah.
Can't speak much, but.
Probably a good thing.
Thank you for your service.
Anything else, Happy?
Nope.
I don't know. We'll call this meeting adjourned, thank you all.